Welcome, everyone. I will call the Commissioners' Meeting of September 15, 2021, to order. And it's always nice to see veteran Don Bradley. We thank him so much for coming on a regular basis to lead us in the pledge. And we're also joined, trying to find him. Reverend Ken Shively from St. Matthew's Lutheran Church to lead us in a moment of silence invocation. So we'll turn it over to our veteran.
I am. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. For the invocation today, I want to offer my paraphrasing of the text of a blessing that is attributed to the Franciscans. May God bless us with discomfort at easy answers, half truths, and superficial relationships, so that we may all live deep within our hearts. May God bless us with anger at injustice, oppression, and exploitation of people, so that together we may work for justice, freedom, and peace. May God bless us with tears to shed for those who suffer from pain, rejection, starvation, and boredom, so that together we may reach out our hands to comfort them and turn their pain into joy. And may God bless us with enough foolishness to believe that we can make a difference in this world, so that together we can and will do what others claim cannot be done. I'm ready.
Okay. All right. We have two proclamations today. The first one we're going to start with is around National Recovery Month. For those of you that aren't aware, National Recovery Month is meant to increase awareness and understanding of mental health and substance abuse disorders, and encourages individuals in need of treatment and recovery services to seek help. Recovery Month celebrates individuals living lives in recovery and recognizes the dedicated workers who provide the prevention, treatment, and recovery support services that help make recovery possible. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, we have some guests in the room. We're joined today by Claire Dahl, who's the Director of Human Services. We also are joined by Vince Reed and Lori Smith from our Drug and Alcohol Department. And then we also are joined today by Julie Hess and Brittany Schultz from the Opioid Collaborative. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Smith to read the proclamation.
Good morning. It's a proclamation for National Recovery Month, September 2021. Whereas local recovery organizations promote National Recovery Month to celebrate those who have overcome their addiction and to recognize those still working towards recovery. And the focus of National Recovery Month is to celebrate the path of recovery and the journey of individuals to this end. And recovery is a central part of behavioral health and one's overall wellness, and the prevention and treatment of mental and/or substance use disorders is effective, and individuals do recover locally and throughout the nation. And we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the County of York, and the York Partnership for Recovery invite all residents of York, Pennsylvania, to participate in National Recovery Month. And we must ensure opportunities for all these individuals achieve and maintain success in their recovery efforts by promoting alternative activities and healthy lifestyles for those in our communities. Now, therefore, we, the York City Mayor and the York County Commissioners of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Recovery Month in York City and York County, and encourage our citizens to observe and support National Recovery Month to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, given this day in York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on the fourth day of September in the year of our Lord 2021. And we have witnessed, hereunto subscribed, our names, York County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Keep in mind, we're still learning our new technology here. So the second proclamation that we have is around Hunger Action Month. Hunger Action Month was established to increase awareness and promote action to reduce hunger in our communities. I think we all recognize that hunger can affect all walks of life. Some people right here in our community are one job loss, one missed paycheck, or one medical emergency away from hunger. However, we have great groups like the York County Food Alliance, and initiatives such as A Seat at the Table, who are focusing their efforts on reducing food insecurity in our York County community. These and other groups have been successful in reducing duplicative food efforts in order to create a more equitable food distribution system throughout our York County community. Decision-making is based on data-driven needs to create new partnerships in order to fill gaps in our food service needs county-wide. And we are also joined today by two guests, actually, three guests, my apologies, Ryan Prater and Ashley Lucas from the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. And we're also joined by, there she is, Jennifer Brillhart from the York County Food Bank. So I'm going to turn this one over to Commissioner Hope.
I'm proud to be here today to read this proclamation. Hunger Action Month, September 2021. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in York County, where as much as 9% of people are food insecure, and one in every eight children do not know where the next meal will come from, York County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide resources for people in our community who need them. York County is committed to working with York County Food Alliance and its partners in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. The pandemic has had devastating health and economic impacts across the country, and is projected that the food insecurity rate in York County will rise to 10%, according to Feeding America, the nation's largest domestic hunger relief organization. The month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public in action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations, to end hunger one helping at a time. Food banks across the country, including York County Food Bank, Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, and their partner agencies, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their community. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, would like to recognize September 2021 as Hunger Action Month in York County, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens, given this day in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on the 15th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021, and is signed by the Board of York County Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item number five on the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through G, as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number six.
I make a motion to approve an extension of a grant agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $49,995. The Department of Probation Services was awarded an overdose reduction grant in February 2021. The grant needs to be extended until March 31, 2022, to expend all funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number seven.
I make a motion to approve an extension to a grant agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $130,499. The Department of Probation Services, in partnership with the program It's About Change, are seeking to extend the existing grant to be able to expend all funds through March 31, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number eight.
I make a motion to approve a grant modification between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, with a no-cost extension of the Project Open Door grant through June 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number nine.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to provide eligible commodities to food pantries, soup kitchens, and shelters participating in the state food purchase program for a total cost of $589,908.72 for the period of July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't know if anybody from the bank would like to make any comments. I know this is a big amount of money, and you do a great job here in York County, but thank you for what you do.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Human Resources Department and Collins Wagner Agency, Inc., York, PA, to provide cyber liability insurance coverage for a total cost of $69,250 for the period of September 6, 2021, to September 6, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know we went out and got bids on this, and this was the best one we received as far as financial interest.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 11.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Recorder of Deeds Office and Harris Recordings Solutions, Matron, Florida, to provide a public notification service for a total cost of $13,000 for license and setup.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I know our Recorder of Deeds is with us today, Laura Schu. I think she has a few comments to share.
Good morning.
Good morning.
With a growing concern of property security, the Recorder of Deeds Office will be offering free-of-charge to York County homeowners a recording notification service. For example, if a mortgage is paid in full, the homeowner will be able to be alerted by email the satisfaction of mortgage document has been recorded. If a document such as a deed or mortgage is recorded that they do not recognize, action can be taken immediately. The homeowner will be able to register on the York County website, add their parcel ID number, which is found on their county real estate or school tax bill. The service will be funded by the Recorder of Deeds Office Records Improvements Fund, which is collected as part of recording fees, not county tax dollars. We will be in full swing by 2022, along with more information on how to add your parcel ID number and begin benefiting from the recording notification service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 12.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Concord Technologies, Seattle, Washington, for electronic fax services from October 1, 2021, to September 30, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 13.
I make a motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and Yo Paving, Spring Grove, Pennsylvania, the lowest responsible bidder for emergency repairs to the northern extension of the Heritage Rail Trail due to storm damage in the total amount of $47,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
I make a motion to approve and ratify the declaration of disaster emergency for the County of York, Pennsylvania, issued by the York County Commissioners on September 1, 2021, for Hurricane Ida.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think everybody knows we had made this decision to sign this when the event was taking place, and we're just ratifying it now in front of the public.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 15.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-24 authorizing the issuance by the York County Industrial Development Authority of up to $558,000 of tax-exempt financing to Shelby P. and Lauren N. Smoker for the purpose of acquiring farm located at 3449 Delta Road, Airville, Lower Chancford Township, York County, Pennsylvania, as authorized under federal tax law as a qualifying first-time farmer.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. And I know we're joined by our colleague, Keneetha. Would you like to share a few comments?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for entertaining this request. I'm here from the Economic Alliance, but I'm wearing my York County Industrial Development Authority hat today. The IDA is a conduit for a program called the Next Generation Farmer Loan Program, which in essence is a bank loan program with a public twist to offer qualifying first-time farmers lower interest rates for purchases of farmland. The project that you would be authorizing today for the IDA to issue debt for is for a couple that is buying 3449 Delta Road in Lower Chancford Township. And we appreciate your consideration of this request today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just, I know you've been here before, and we've discussed this, and this is a great program. But how would a young person, a young person wanting to be in farming, whether coming up through 4H or whatever, Future Farmers of America, would know about this program? Do we advertise and market it?
We really market it primarily through some ag groups, as well as local ag lenders in York County, because you have to have a bank to be able to access this program. And the ag lending community is relatively small. It's very specialized, so most of them really bring deals to us as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions for Keneetha?
And they should call me.
And how will they reach you?
Through the York County Economic Alliance, yceapa.org, or 717-848-4000. Thank you for the opportunity to give a commercial.
You're welcome. All right. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-25, the 2020 York County Consolidation Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and authorize its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The report covers the accomplishments of the Home Investment Partnership Act, Community Development Block Grant, and Emergency Solutions Grant programs for program year 2020.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 17.
Motion to award Marcella Shale Legacy Fund Grants to the following entities and projects as listed below in the agenda.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know if Mark was here, what I ask, and but I think the public knows for many years now, we'd be getting Marcella Shale funds from the state, and we get one check a year, and this has been advertised to communities throughout the, you know, county to come in and ask for funding for projects that are basically for trails and recreation and land preservation. And this is a list that we have gone over and approved for this year's allocations.
Great. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 18.
Motion to approve and release funds in the amount of $54,626.85 to Farm and Natural Lands Trust of York County for acquisition of a conservation easement of 98.8 acres in Washington Township owned by Edward K. Potts.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, and we're joined by our other colleague today, Sean Kenny.
Good morning, and thanks for having me and everyone else. I heard Brian Tate say this was a heavy-hitting group this morning, so I'm guessing he means mostly me, so. I've been involved in the future leaders of York, speaking of commercials, for over a dozen years now, and I gave a tour with a bunch of high school students with Kevin Schreiber and Silas Chamberlain, and one of the kids on the tour, on the hike, asked me loads of questions about work. And then he said, you know, I have somebody who'd be perfect for this. And I said, who's that? And he said, Ed Potts. And I was, I felt like I finally did something right. And I said, you know, we're working with Ed Potts. And he was so happy. Here you go, a high school kid looking about land preservation. So Ed Potts up in Wellsville, Washington Township, just shy of 100 acres, several buildings dating to the early 1800s into the early 1900s. It's on the National Register Historic Places. It has quite a stretch of Burmudian Creek and a number of tributaries to it, over 5,000 feet total in stream frontage, various stream frontage there, 4,500 feet of the actual branch of Burmudian Creek, and a number of wet areas as well, and very high-quality soils. So this is your typical, very old-style, large lot, York County farm, mix of high-quality soils and waterways running through it. So thanks for your consideration on it.
Any questions for Sean? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Item number 19.
Motion to approve and release funds in the amount of $19,328.15 to Farm and Natural Lands Trust of York County for acquisition of a conservation easement of 32.8 acres in Chancford Township owned by Mark A. Bupp, Brian E. Bupp, and Sheila J. Bupp.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. And?
Thirty-three acres. If you hit 74 and head south, you're bound to run into some Bupp's down there. This is, I think, less than 1% of the Bupp family that takes up that area. This is an entirely wooded property and another long stretch. I think there's over 5,000 acres on Otter Creek. It's entirely wooded. It's steep slopes, and a lot of people think, well, this is really under no threat of development. And yes, we do limit development on properties, but we're also protecting the natural resources here, wildlife, repairing efforts, and as we've noted earlier in the meeting, flood control. So we'll have a really great old growth and new growth forest down there, protecting when we have flood issues that will help kind of absorb some of those waters and things like that. So really beautiful property. And the other thing I'll note, it's between two already-preserved farms by the ag program, York County Ag Land Preservation Board, two rather large farms also owned by different Bupp's, oddly enough. Who would have guessed? So, thank you.
Any questions for Sean? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 20.
Motion to approve and ratify the submission of the 2022-2023 Children, Youth, and Families Needs-Based Plan and Budget on behalf of the York County Office of Children, Youth, and Families to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services Office of Children, Youth, and Families, Harrisburg, PA, for the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, in the amount of $55,328,968.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 21.
Motion to approve the Tax Refund Register 2021-06 authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $688.69.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 22.
Motion to approve the Check Register for the week of September 8, 2021 totaling $7,260,372.82.
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 23.
Motion to approve the Check Register for the week of September 15, 2021 totaling
My second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 24. We did have an executive session between our last meeting regarding matters with the personnel in the Elections Office and the Treasurers Office. On to other business. We have one update today. It kind of ties to a motion we passed earlier regarding the disaster declaration. We just wanted to give an update on behalf of our Emergency Management Department regarding Tropical Depression Ida. For those that have been impacted by the remnants of Tropical Depression Ida, we want to make sure that you apply for assistance at disasterassistance.gov or by calling FEMA at 1-800-621-3362. We also have posted on our website two flyers with that same information, one in English and also one in Spanish. So if you want to check out our website, that information is also available on our website. In addition, the York County Office of Emergency Management is coordinating with FEMA to set up a disaster recovery center. When this is established, affected residents can visit the Disaster Recovery Center, apply for assistance, and speak with other agencies that may be able to assist them and get additional information. More details will be available as we get them, as anticipated that this will be in place within the next week. And then we also wanted to share with the community that both our York County Human Services Department and our York County Veteran Affairs Office are working with residents that may need assistance. So that's what we have regarding other business. We will now open it up for any public comment. So, Mayor, you probably know the drill, but we tell everybody that comes up there, just identify yourself, state your municipality, and make sure you sign in on the sheet, and Michelle will time you. If you could limit your remarks to three minutes or less, be great.
Sure. I will be brief, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
And I will remain for the next meeting that I want to comment on. But there's an item that came up across my desk, actually, an email from you, President Wheeler, on moving four of the polling places in the city of York. Upon reviewing that, I approve of your decision to move those polling places. However, I do not approve of the timing of this. We have seven weeks up until the next election. One election on the east end of town is affected by three of the polling places that are going to be moved. This is an election that affects the justice system here in the city of York, so that election disproportionately affects the residents of the city of York. And I'm very concerned that your choice to move these prior to this upcoming election in seven weeks could be a hindrance on voter turnout or a confusion to the voters of the city of York. I humbly request that you postpone the movement of these polling places until November 3, giving folks six months' advance notice before the next election in the springtime. I don't think it should be too much of an inconvenience to anyone to change that decision by a few weeks, and I definitely believe that it will reduce the amount of voter suppression that you could be causing by moving these polling places right before an election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Michael Helfrich, City of York, Mayor. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Yes, ma'am. Hi. You're welcome. Just state your name, municipality, and Michelle will start her little clock. And if you haven't signed in on the sign-in sheet, if you could do so before leaving.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha Dorm, Spring Garden Township, former employee of the County of York, specifically working with the Commissioner's Office as the county grant administrator. So I left that position in 2011, and I don't believe that position has ever been refilled. Might want to rethink that. Reason being, there's a significant amount of money, competitive funds, that are available for departments across the board, but your departments need assistance in applying for those. Uh... But your departments need assistance in applying for those, not just those direct allocations. But part of why I wanted to come here this morning has to do with MHI-D. So I am the mother of a child, now a young man, age twenty, that has Down Syndrome and is also taught in an autistic support class. York County, long before COVID, had a rural lack of services for folks like me, for my family, for families all across York County. I believe it was in two thousand and seven when Easter sales lost their funding for daycare for special needs children. So for the entire County of York, there is not one daycare that specializes in services for special needs children. The Ark of York County now has two after-school programs that they service for teenagers, which caps out at about twelve per site. That means twenty-four people in all of York County can receive after-school services. For folks like me who want to work, who can work and provide value, we have no resources. For something like behavioral support, I say behavioral because when my child needed help in school, we were on the list for over two years with services with MHI-D. Not their fault. They are trying. But I was instructed that I should teach my child to hit someone because behavioral problems are elevated higher than intellectual disabilities. As a grant consultant, I am currently working with the American Rescue Plan, funding all across the United States, advising departments, advising government entities on how to utilize these funds. What I would like to ask is that there would be consideration for a portion of the funds from ARP to be made available, whether that is through grants, for those agencies that service folks with intellectual disabilities. In this past year, in working with COVID, any child over the age of seventeen that was being cared for at home, they didn't receive a check because they were cared for at home. And the list just goes on and on. So we have this entire forgotten community, and yet we need help. Every day, I'm helping communities bring in millions of dollars. During the time that I've been sitting here today, I want to issue a challenge to your departments. Several extensions were approved for grants. This past year has been a little bit crazy. So, you know, some services weren't being provided during a period of time. So the extension makes sense. But what I encourage you to do, and what I encourage your departments to do, is to go back now and consider budget modifications. Change on the grant how the money can be spent. There are things that are being approved that have never been approved in the twenty-plus years that I've been doing this. So if before the grant said we couldn't help pay for housing for someone that was in recovery, you can put in a modification request for that housing. If we were only doing six sessions of therapy and someone needs ten, give them the ten. Because what happens is next year, when those same grants open again and you haven't spent the money, it looks like you don't need the money. So I'm challenging your departments now to go back and modify because our communities need help and they need that help right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So two things.
Yes, ma'am.
We did, in CARES funding, you may not be aware, but we did allocate funding to some organizations that service those with intellectual disabilities. So we did do that with some of the CARES funding from last year. And if you haven't met Claire Doll, he's in the back. He runs our Human Resources Department. Make sure you guys get connected.
I do know Claire very well. I also know that there were some restrictions on that funding. So if, for instance, if we needed masks, if we needed safety and sanitation and things on that line, we could get that type of assistance. But for instance, for myself, if I needed to be able to go out to a meeting and needed someone to care for my child, as I said, there are not special needs, that type of funding was not available. So there needs to be more flexibility to meet the individual needs of a family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
All right. Good job, Sam. Nobody wants to talk behind a kid's speech. Appreciate that. My name's Tom Hartis. I'm a York City resident, and I truly wish I could be up here as an objective resident. Unfortunately, I'm not. I want to follow up on what Mayor Helfrich talked about. I'm one of the candidates in an election out east end. Public administration teaches us two things, and you guys know this, it's the incremental change over time. And normally, changing for polling places wouldn't be a drastic change, except if you drill down and look at it, it is affecting our race out the east end. One of the wards that you propose to change is United Way. There's two wards that go in there. Percentage-wise, I think it's about sixty percent of that ward. So reiterating what the mayor said, to me, it makes sense. Roll this out November the third, have it for the next election, and not have us try to scramble and educate our voters now where they need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Ryan Prater. I am from the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. I am not a resident of York County, but my colleagues that are with me today, Ashley Lucas from the Food Bank and Jennifer Brillhart from York County Food Bank are. So I just want to thank you guys for approving the proclamation. I also wanted to give a special shout out to our partners in York County. You know, they're the ones that are on the front lines every day getting the food in the hands of the residents that need it. So thank you. September is Hunger Action Month, recognized nationwide by food banks to bring attention to the issue of hunger in our communities. We know food can be an impossible choice for many of us. That might mean, what are we eating for dinner? Who's making dinner tonight? Where are we going for dinner? But for some people in central Pennsylvania, in York County, that decision is, should I eat or should I pay my electric bill this month or tonight? So we know it can be an impossible choice. This month, we are asking the community, what can you do to help end hunger? We have three things. We have learn, commit, and speak up. So this is a perfect example of learning, putting a face on hunger in your community, knowing that there are people facing food insecurity in York County. Second is commit. So of course, food is not free, so we always ask for monetary donations. But you can also commit to a virtual food drive and share it with your friends on Facebook or commit to a volunteer shift at the York County Food Bank or any of our partners. So there are things you can, oh, and then act, sorry, speak up. We encourage you to speak up, call your elected officials, write your elected officials, and tell them to support policies that will help end hunger in our community. So thank you again, commissioners. Thank you to our partners. And we will, our big event is tomorrow, our virtual town hall. We'll have a panel of partners. We'll be discussing what we learned from COVID and how we're building resilience for the future. So if you can join us, it's on our web, the signup is on our website from noon to one PM tomorrow. So thank you, commissioners, and thank you, everybody else.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. Yeah, Jennifer Brillhart. I am a Spring Garden resident, and I am the CEO of the York County Food Bank. So just wanted to thank you again for the proclamation that you presented to us today and to thank you for all the support that you've been providing us, as well as the additional CARES money that we received. It has really helped us because, I mean, as you all know, COVID has been difficult for all of us, especially in York County and for those that are going hungry. And so we have been able to increase the amount of food that we are distributing to those that are going hungry. And we, if you haven't heard, we did open up a drive-through distribution. It's in our emergency food hub on Haynes Road, where we are able to make sure that we're getting the food out there to those that are in need. But again, we also work with all of our partner agencies. And unique, York is very unique in the sense that we have not only Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, but then we also have York County Food Bank. So we have two, a regional food bank and a local food bank, both working together to make sure that we are making, you know, that everyone is being able to be fed and making sure that families are going happy. So we are just grateful again for all of your support, and thank you, everyone.
Any additional comment?
Hello there. My name is Thomas Pope. I'm a resident of the city of York. And I think frankly and bluntly as a citizen, I think a lot of politicians that are outside of York County at the federal and state level, whether it comes to the American Rescue Plan or a lot of other things in that regard, if they really want to help the economy, sometimes the best thing a politician can do is get out of somebody's way. And as someone who knows scores of people who are self-employed, as well as those who work for others, that's easier said than done. Second of all, I spoke about a month ago about election integrity. President Trump lost the election by forty-three thousand votes over three states, which is nothing if you tack into the fact that the American population is three hundred and thirty million. Over seven states, and particularly there were scores of statistical oddities, including Pennsylvania. And to the politicians that want to disregard the people who have a problem with election integrity and President Trump's loss, I would suggest that you will find a very vigorous and defiant and invigorated percentage of the voters like myself, who when I stand idly by, we need to have a forensic audit of every county's election in this state and the other six states where this has occurred. Yesterday, there was a major election in California for governor, and there were scores of voters that came out in a place called Woodmont, which is in Los Angeles, as well as other places in the state. And the voters, who happened to be Republican, found out that they had already voted, to their surprise. Now fortunately, most of them got provisional votes, were able to vote anyway. But this kind of stuff occurs way too much to go unanswered. And to treat people like myself as conspiracy nuts or laughing stocks, well, I would suggest that would be unwise. And I want to thank you for your time, but I would appreciate that there would be something done about it since we're now into September and the state government is now conducting business as usual and everyone's out of their summer vacation mode that we would look into this. Thank you very much.
I think I saw, yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Helena Ziegler, East Philadelphia Street in York City. First, I have a question. I would like to know when the extension expires for the ADA audit of voting places.
So this is a period of public?
I can't hear you.
So this is a period of public comment. We don't deliberate. We'll certainly take that as a note and get you.
All right. I understand you got an extension. Okay. So my concern is voting locations. I applaud the mayor for what he said about postponing the change because Fourth U B is the church where I would go to vote. I work at that, also at that location. I went up to the church, and there is an issue. Their lock on the door can only be released for two hours at a time. So I asked her, I said, Secretary, I said, well, what are you going to do about it? Is someone going to be there from the church to do this every two hours? And her answer was, we don't know. So that is my first concern with the, with the location. But on a broad scope, the location of where we vote is a vital concern with an upcoming, I'm assuming people know, an ADA audit of all voting locations. I understand two to three years ago, the FBI, I actually met an FBI agent. He came in to measure ADA. Twenty-five locations of the hundred and fifty in York County were audited, and three or five passed out of all of those. Some locations where we voted at, vote the literacy council, the door was two inches too narrow. And that basically was because when that door was put in, ADA said thirty-three inches, and now ADA says thirty-five inches. We had assisted living places that did not pass. We had township offices that did not pass. And so hence, a lot of locations do not want to upgrade to comply with ADA. And that is a vital concern in the county. Maybe Mr. Smith is aware, there's places where people go to vote and the voting place is no bigger than a walk-in closet. There must be a policeman at the road to direct traffic so there's no accidents. These types of things could be completely eliminated if we would move to using schools. Eastern High School was used. There's other good school was, was used. If we would voluntarily, because the state has not addressed the issue, ask the school districts for that day to be closed, we could have voting centers at schools. They are paid for by the taxpayers and comply with, with everything with, with ADA, which would also address the other issue of finding people to work at the elections. I don't know how many of you have ever worked at an election facility, place, six in the morning till nine at night, and you're not allowed to leave. And there's a lot of people my age, older, who no longer can comply with that. And that is a concern. Schools being used and closed that day. We could get teachers to do their civic duty to help with elections. We could get eighteen-year-old students to help with elections, which have done in, in other states. So that's my concern. I hope somebody publishes when the extension expires for the ADA audit. I understand Lancaster County had a volunteer school closing back. I know a gentleman who's superintendent of Penn Manor School District, and he said it lasted about two years, and then everything went back to the way it was. But if we look forward to the twenty-twenty-four presidential election, and if we start addressing, the county starts addressing the issue now, by twenty-twenty-four, we could be using schools. Or we could have a voting center at York Fairgrounds because I understand the new voting scanners can be programmed to take any district, any, any area. So anyone could go, go in and, and use that. The reason I say aim for twenty-twenty-four is because, having been on York City School Board, the teachers' union must approve the schedule. So they now are voting on twenty-two, twenty-three's calendar. And so you, you really have to work a number of times ahead to be able to utilize, utilize our, our school. I do like that we voted at the literacy council building, United Way building, because people could park and walk right in. Fourth U B, they've got to walk across the street because there's only one handicap parking place at that location. So there are a couple of the, of the concerns that, that I have. The other thing is, and I don't know whether you address it or if we get the state legislature to address it, I'm very concerned about when East Market Street is going to be closed at eighty-three. Where and how is traffic going to be directed? And I would think it would be under your jurisdiction somehow to get information from PennDOT and ask exactly how traffic is going to be handled when that's closed. I thought it was interesting that we once again had a flood there. So what is PennDOT going to be doing about the creek is another, is another, another issue. But please take an effort to look into using schools to vote. It would eliminate ADA compliance. It would take care of a lot of issues and make it a lot easier for people to vote. And I would also like to take this time to thank you for your professional questions, reply to the legislature's request to audit York County. One more other thing, there's a concern with people's signatures. When you sign in, who do I contact to find out and to tell people if you want to change your signature? Where do you go? And, and how do you, how do you do, how do you do that? Whether that's the election board or whatever.
So thank you for your comments. We'll just, we will say that we, we have been working with the school districts.
I can't, I could, I can't hear you.
We have been working with the school district, so we'll share that with you. We've also are aware of the ADA issues. We're working on that. We also We also are working on a program to get students to help at polls. And you may not be aware, poll workers are permitted to work split shifts unless you are in one of the-
Only the assistants.
Only-
The judge of election can't leave, and neither can the minority and majority.
Ma'am, if you would just please let me finish. Any of the elected positions must work all day. That is correct. But poll workers are permitted to work in split shifts.
So where I vote, there is no other than us, the three of us.
Okay, so is there any other public comment? Alright, here, oh.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Chad Baker. I live in Manchester Township. I am the chair of the Democratic Party here in York County. Not to prolong the conversation about elections, I do want to address and thank the county for providing an overview report that looked at the May primary and provided both an analysis of that election as well as recommendations moving forward. Couple of concerns that I have, first and foremost, is that over eight thousand mail-in ballots were not returned in York County. Nearly third, that's nearly a third of those voters that requested ballots did not receive, or did not return them. The concern is, and this was partially addressed in the report, that those mail-in ballots did not go out until close to two weeks prior to the election. Given one drop box in the county, and given that there's significant mileage between the northern part, southern part, and all points in between to get to the city for the drop box, that timeframe is, is not acceptable. It needs to be extended, and I know that is something that was discussed in the report. So I appreciate that. I also want to address the fact that there was, there was discussion in an analysis in the report about the polls that ran out of balloting. I do want to point out the fact that in total, it appears that about thirty-seven-hundred extra ballots were needed during that election. And again, had we been given more time with mail-in ballots, I believe that a number of those individuals that showed up extra may have had more time to return their ballots. We know we have no control over the mailing system. I understand that. But when you give just a short, brief window to get them delivered and get them returned, it forces voters that maybe wanted to vote by mail to go to the polling place. I do have a few questions, and these obviously can be addressed offline as well. I do, would like to know, based on that report, how many mail-in ballots were received specifically at the drop boxes in comparison to how many were actually mailed in? I'd also like to know specifically what role the commissioners played in both the planning and the implementation and oversight of the May primary election. My last comment this morning is, obviously, given the, the news of the last day, it is concerning, on my behalf, that forty-eight days prior to election, an election, there is conversation of, of a personnel shift, a restructuring of offices here for the county elections. I think it's irresponsible to the county voters. We do not have a solid date yet as to when ballots will be mailed. There are a lot of procedural things that need to happen between today and November. And I'm highly concerned that if there is a reorganization or a restructuring of that office or personnel changes, that additional problems will result as opposed to corrections to those. So I urge the commissioners to consider or reconsider if they've already made the decision on those personnel changes. Thank you.
My name is Julie Hess. I want to say good morning to the commissioners and thank you.
Hi, Julie.
On behalf of the York Partnership for Recovery, which is a bunch of agencies that have been meeting for months to get together to plan our big recovery day to celebrate National Recovery Month, which we had that event on September fifth at the Revolution Stadium, and it was wonderful. We appreciate you taking time to read the proclamation, and just want you to be aware that there are many, many people living successfully in recovery in York, Pennsylvania. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, I'll make one more canvas over the room, just to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we are moving on to salary board.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September first, 2021 salary board meeting as submitted. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number two.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collecting bargaining agreements where set forth in York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and row offices, as stated below, with no additional benefits or concessions, unless otherwise noted. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are on to retirement board.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on August eighteenth, 2021 as submitted. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to include the following vested individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Bethany Mizuolek Panrack, Lori J. Moyar, I C Y D C.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to include the following individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Terry Billett, prison. Amy S. Enzer, prison. Michael G. Rousher, Facilities Administration. Lucy Schrevert, prison. Kathy Asens, prison. Bonnie C. Westervelt, domestic relations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number five.
Lee Martin, Managing Director of Marquette Associates, Inc. will be reviewing the 2021 second quarter update and the year-to-date through August 2021.
Good morning, everybody.
Hi, Lee.
Morning.
Do I have your presentation online?
Perfect, thank you. I seem to be getting further, further back, quarter by quarter. Let me just, a little bit. There we go. Okay. Well, good morning again. What, on this eleven o'clock, what time do you have? Just so I know. Okay, I'll spend, alright, I'll spend a little bit longer on the pension and just do the observations for you for the other two. Okay? Okay, then, so let's, let's get straight into it then. Just quickly on the markets for you. Page seven. As you can see, you know, economic growth has continued to gain momentum across the globe this year. And you can see GDP came in very strong, six-point-five percent for the quarter. No shock, because that's on the back of, you know, this continued Fed support for the economy by the bond, the monthly bond buybacks and keeping rates near zero, effectively just pouring gas on the markets. But as you can see to the right there, on that top, top graphic, that, you know, GDP is expected to return to long-term norms, like pre-pandemic norms here, as the Fed starts tapering later this year and going into next year. And we're really then looking for the private, well, to, to really run the economy as the public passes the baton on to, to private. Obviously, a lot of that is dependent on staying open and keeping a lid on, on, on the resurgence of COVID. But so far, things look good there. On the next page, just the big story of the year has been inflation. You're going to see that shortly within the good returns you've got with your real assets. You know, it's no shock to see inflation really spike year-on-year when we look at these numbers for the end of June, because if you remember, it was negative last year. However, we are starting to see inflation kind of retreat a little from the highs. It's not unusual to see inflation spike after a recession as companies build out inventories again. But we're starting to see that kind of retreat again now. And you probably all heard the term transitory temporary inflation in the news. That's, that's what we, you know, we're all, we're all expecting here, and it's what the TIPS market is suggesting, because two-year relative to five- and ten-year TIPS is suggesting inflation is going to be higher the next two years than the following three, and the following five after that. Okay? Just quickly globally, you can see those, the, the developed world are expected to come out of this recession quicker and stronger than, than most of the others. And that's really on the back of, you know, successful vaccination programs, et cetera. As you can see, if you look at the return shortly, like the emerging market space is more, it's been more difficult for those, those countries. They may take three or four years, because they're quite a bit behind in their vaccination programs. And you can see that when you look at how open their economies are relative to the developed world. This is just something that we're watching from an investment point of view. And then finally, before we get into your funds, just quickly, what, what did the financial markets do? Well, obviously, with the continued economic recovery, it's very bullish for stocks once again. And you can see US equities are up over eight percent for the quarter. We did see a change in leadership coming out of vaccine approvals end of last year. We did see this move back to value in cyclical stocks, doing well. In the second quarter, we seen a more of a move back to, to the growth in technology that, that outperformed. US, you can see, outperformed both international and emerging, which, which I just talked about. On the bond side, you can see core bonds there at one-point-eight were positive for the quarter. And that was basically because yields came down again in the second quarter. But you can see, you know, still negative year-to-date and still very much a millstone around a lot of pension funds next, over the next couple of years with yields, you know, around one, one percent for, for the intermediate of current. And then finally, inflation sensitive at the bottom, as I discussed earlier. You know, coming out of recession, you do see spikes there. You can see TIPS up three percent, you know, outperforming core bonds. REITs and commodities in double figures, outperforming the broad equity markets, again on the back of this rise in inflation. So any comments on the, on the markets? Nope? Okay, let's go straight into your fund and the next tab on the hard copies. Page seventeen there. So you ended the quarter at five-hundred-and-twenty-six million. So far this summer, you've added another eight million on top of that. So the fund continues to grow. Even though you tilt a little more to value and growth outperforming, you did, your, your funds did very well for the quarter, up over five percent above your benchmark. You can see the areas that were very positive. It's the global equities again. But then really, what has been beneficial to your fund this year has been all your diversifying asset classes. Your defensive equity, your real assets, your private equity got the great start. They did, did very well for you. What didn't work as well for the quarter was just more of your low volatility, steady Eddie, kind of high-quality type investments. But we are starting to see them come into play now in the third quarter, as, you know, the Fed have mentioned that they're going to start tapering, and now fundamentals are going to matter again, and high-quality companies are probably going to matter again from an investment thesis point of view. Longer term, key here is, you know, over eleven percent a year, which is why your funding status has gone up so strong. Just a smidge behind the policies you would expect, because you have lower beta than the policy, so you don't capture all of the very aggressive upside. But still well above median and far better from, you know, because you have lower volatility and downside now. You did make an allocation to private credit in Q3. And then I would say the only disappointing thing on this right now for you guys is we've been in a queue now for IFM for two years. You're going to see in a minute the benefit of infrastructure that you had with JP Morgan. It's just that, you know, IFM are just waiting. There's all the talk of all the money to throw into infra. They're just waiting to get this funded, and then you'll, I think you'll see that pulled down within the next two quarters. Just quickly, there, there your performance. We kind of talked about that already. I think the key here is, you look on the bottom of the page, look how much diversification you have now outside of stocks and bonds, real estate, timber, farmland, infrastructure, defensive equity, private equity, private credit you have now as well. So that will, should all help you if we do have another correction in the future. Barb, if you can remember back to like the tech bubble bursting, we just had stocks and bonds, you know. You captured most of it. Now you've got a, you know, twenty, twenty or so percent in these alternatives that should, should help mitigate some of the downside. And you can see that, as I talked about, the risk here on page twenty, less risk, lower, lower beta. But not going to hang on too much on these. Let's just get into the funds, because of time. Page twenty-three. Equities, as I said, do lean a bit more to higher quality and value within your equities. So did lag a little in the quarter, but still strong, up six-point-seven. Yet for the year, still ahead, year-to-date thirteen-seven relative to thirteen. The area that, that's given most of the outperformance is your global equities. That mix continues to do well. We are making a couple of changes on the global to bring it in line more with what you see on the OPEB, which is our best ideas for the low vol and the growth, global growth manager. You'll see that in your next, next quarter report. Page twenty-four, as you can see, this year, you're international again slightly ahead with your high-quality Schroders play. But we'll start on the alternatives, the defensive equity that went in earlier this year. You can see already over three-hundred basis points of outperformance, up over eleven percent relative to the bench of eight. So that's been very accretive to you. We use this instead of hedge funds that are normally two-and-twenty, you know, two percent, twenty percent performance. This is just thirty basis points. So you're two-hundred basis points ahead already from a net point of view. Your real estate, as you sold your last time, we, we've been pulling you out of the JP Morgan fund. August one, you finally are out of that fund now. That's the largest fund out there. Big overweight to retail, very difficult for it to be nimble in this environment. The funds that you've added to Clarion and TA, you can see the impact they've had straight away. Absolutely crushed the benchmarks. And that is because, you know, by choice, we went into those. They have a lot lower in retail, a lot more in industrial, and they're getting a lot higher yield for you than the JP Morgan one. So that ability to, to kind of pivot quickly, even in private areas like this, has been accretive to your fund. Infra, you can see, since inception, six-one compared to three-one over the nine months. So again, over three-hundred basis points outperformance. Timber, farmland, you're starting to get, you know, you come out of that J-curve last year, and you're starting to get good income now. As you can see, the one-year, about three-hundred ahead, year-to-date, three-month, throwing off some good yield there now. And you did re-up and do a little bit more into, to, to timber, too. So that's been, been accretive. And then your private equities, you see there, you heard last time I said, you know, you had a fund that sold a company for seventy percent, IRR, and they're continuing to be strong. You can see straight off the bat here, nearly thirteen percent already for you, relative to the bench of six-point-five. So. And then fixed income is going to be pretty close to, to bench over time. Keep the powder dry there, particularly as you've been diversifying out of fixed. It's an area you don't want to take a lot of risk. But as you know, and you've heard me say, it's an area you're not going to get a lot of return from over the next five years. So, which is why you've been diversifying out, so. So that's the pension fund. There are some other pages in the back showing you the side-by-side of some of the real estate, as I said. Twenty-seven, you can see JP Morgan, higher retail dividend, about three-point-four for you. As you go, Clarion, you can see a lot less in office and retail. Same with TA, a lot less. Dividend yield was near five percent. And then the final one, infra here on page thirty, and this is why you're funded from fixed, you're getting six percent. you're getting 6% yield from it. You can't get close to that in fixed income right now. So, so, so just reinforcing why you've made some of these decisions from an asset allocation point of view. So that's your pension fund. Any, any questions on that? Nope? Okay, we'll, we'll just hit the, the quick highlights of the other two pools then for you. You go to tab four, the OPEB. You ended the, sorry, you ended the quarter at 42 million, just a little under 1 million gain since then. Again, giving a little value tilt, a little more defensive, outperformance of your managers was good, did nearly 6% here, compared to policy index, 5.5. It's higher than the pension, yes, because you're more aggressive on this fund, because it is purely a long-term investment pool. Okay? Similar things worked well for you and went against you for the quarter. Since inception, which always makes me smile when I see this, you know, you've, you've returned over 10% a year and gained over $10 million, which is money you would have had to go into the general fund or raise taxes for, you know, you just got, the market is gifted through your investment strategies. So that's why you're a long way ahead of most counties there, when it comes to funding OPEB liabilities. And because you're much more risk on from an allocation point of view, more to equities, you've got more defensive within the equities. You can see there's much lower vol and downside relative to your policy index than the pension, just because, again, it's a smaller fund, you can't diversify it as much, so that's why you put it more into equities to get some more return, but you're putting it in the higher-quality, low-vol stuff, so you're not capturing all the market swings in that, in that area. And then just finally, for those, there is another additional commitment to your real estate manager, which is going to occur October 1, and you did add global listed infrastructure this quarter as well. So it's not the private infra, but again, even the listed is posted a 4.5% to 5% yield. So again, you sourced it from fixed income because this is a long-term pool, and you're getting higher yield as well as some appreciation from the infrastructure area. So, so that's your OPEB fund. Anything on that? All right. Put everyone to sleep, or, there we go, last one, the 457 for you. It's just great to see, and I always put this chart in so you can see trends, because it says a lot to me, you know, what, what's going on with the plan, and the good thing here is, every quarter I come back, keep seeing more people, you know, it's only a few, but it's more, it's trending in the right direction, balance is increasing, everything's increasing except the average age of people, which means some newer people are coming in the plan as well, which is great. And, you know, when we look at the allocations, most of it, 70%, is allocated to target date funds, which is prudent for most people who don't have time to look at it, you know, they just make their allocation, leave it, and it will glide over time from a risk and return point of view. If you look at your individual funds, all of them have investments now, the allocation's close to a 70/30, and when you look at your average age, yeah, that's probably about right for a 50, 50 to 55-year-old. So, you know, that's good to see, that, that what tells me that the education's working as well. We are, actually, we have a meeting with, with Holly after this, where we're going to talk about a couple of potential fund changes for the fund, but I think the big story for this past quarter for you is just being able to take advantage of the, getting access to the institutional share classes at Vanguard, and they switched that. Are they in place now? Is that blackout period gone? Yeah, they are, great, okay. It's not like the pension where you can change things overnight, you know, with blackout periods, it takes a little while on the 457, but look at the benefit of that, your target date fees have gone down from 90 basis points to nine. Huge. And ultimately, you know, for, for your employees that are in those funds, you know, they should then have more assets when they retire in the future, because every dollar that stays in the plan will compound and grow over time. So, from a fiduciary point of view, as which we're a co-fiduciary as well, obviously, on your funds, you know, that's great to see that, that you've now been able to get access to them. I wish we could with our firm, but. That, that sums up the 457 for you.
Yeah, and I just, yes, right, and encouraging people to get into the program.
We're starting the meetings up again this quarter, so we'll be doing it again on a quarterly basis, educating everybody.
Yes, it's not been a great environment to.
No, it hasn't been really, fortunately.
But it's good to see that you still have been trending, even those small increments, hopefully, of the next 12 months.
Yeah, we've also made it a part of the employee orientation now, so that they're, they're getting it day one, and then we reinforce it with our quarterly meeting.
Great. Anything else for Lee? Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Any executive sessions?
No, no executive sessions.
We'll open up for public comment. If I could ask for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion during the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. We are going to take a brief five-minute recess before the election board. We'll be right back. Okay, we will call the Board of Elections meeting to order. We have a couple of motions up in front of us, and so we'll turn it over to Steve. Steve, hold on a second. Ma'am, could you please sit down?
Good morning.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Good morning. Steve Ulrich, representing the Elections and Voter Registration Office. We bring forth, bring forth before the board this morning, seven motions of polling place location changes. Motions A and B are to fill sites, precincts that we no longer have polling locations available due to the withdrawal of the places that we had during the spring. Motion C, D, E, and F are moves that are being made, D, E, and F are being recommended to move the polling location actually within the boundaries of the precinct. Motion C is due to the fact that the YMCA will no longer be a polling place beginning with spring 2022. Also, motion G is a motion to temporarily move location in Shrewsbury Township, 1st District, due to the inavailability of the current building due to renovations at the Township building. We were, our plan is to return to the Township building for the 2022 primary. We bring these motions before the board.
So I think what we're going to do is we'll go through each one individually, okay? So I will ask for a motion.
Okay.
For the Hanover Borough, 5th Ward.
I'll make a motion to permanently move the polling location in Hanover Borough, 5th Ward, to Sam Paul's Lutheran Church, 127 York Street, Hanover, from the York Street Medical Center of 400 York Street in Hanover.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And you said, Steve, this was needed to be done because they wanted to change.
So this one was a UPMC location, and UPMC is not going to be able to allow us to use their facility going forward.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Then I'll make a motion to permanently move the polling location in Newbury Township, 3rd District, from Milcom Town Church of God, 260 Red Mill Road, Goldsboro, from the Newbury Township Building at 1915 Old Trail Road in Eders.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Additional discussion?
The same reason, right, move.
Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I will make a motion to permanently move the polling location in York City, 5th Ward, to Appell Center, 50 North George Street, from the YMCA at 90 North Newbury Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I, Michael, let's say something.
Thank you. Michael Helfrich, Mayor of the City of York, just wanted to say that the city is in favor of this move and the schedule that I had just heard, that it would move in the spring of 2022, and also that we would provide parking at the City of York with the cooperation of the, of the commissioners. We would provide the, if it is going to the Appell Center, as I see, we would provide the Philadelphia Street Parking Garage, and voters would get vouchers so that they would be provided free parking in the, in the city parking facility when they're voting. I think I would technically need permission from the Board of Elections to provide those items within the polling location. So as we approach that time, I guess I will, with your approval, I will come back to you and make sure that we have permission to provide parking vouchers to voters at the Appell Center in the 5th Ward.
And Steve, could you just, for us, this one, is this because the YMCA is no longer going to be open for us, or is this?
The YMCA was no longer going to be available beginning with the primary in 2022.
So, so when?
So it is available for the general election?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is available in the 2021 general election, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So then.
So then we need to amend the motion to include the move would occur in the, for the pri, for the primary 2022.
Spring 2022.
So if I could have a motion?
Let me know, we read the motion, or?
You've amended the, truly amended the motion, Commissioner amended the motion, somebody just needs to second.
I'll, I'll second the amended motion.
So I have a motion and a second to the amended motion. Any further discussion?
And so this is that we are moving, and this is actually my ward, where I actually vote, from the YMCA to the Appell Center, not effective until the spring of 2022. Okay.
Well, to clarify, we will make the move after the general election of this year and start communicating that to voters.
Right.
So that they are well aware. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and we thank the mayor for working out the parking situation for us. We appreciate that. Okay.
I will make, I will make a motion to permanently move the polling location in York City, 7th Ward, to People's Bank Park, 5 Brooks Robinson Way, from Alexander Good School at 251 North Broad Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sure.
Okay.
All right, just for clarity, would you also make the amendment to push this till after the general election?
Well, we're going to have a discussion, and then we'll determine if we are going to amend a motion or not, so.
Okay.
And Steve, correct, I mean, this one is being moved because the, the polling location at York City, 5th Ward, Alexander Good, is not located in the boundaries.
Alexander Good School is not located in the 7th, in the 7th Ward precinct, that is correct.
Commissioners, while I respect and agree that the appropriate procedures should be followed, that the polling places should be in the wards where the voters are, this has been the polling place for individuals for a very long time, and I do not believe that the move is necessary prior to the November 2 election. I believe that following the same schedule as item number C would provide the voters with a better result in the fall, and as you mentioned, plenty of opportunity for education before the spring primary.
Any further discussion?
Well, this motion, as it stands now, D obviously affects E also, correct? Because.
So we do realize that everybody's still available to use as a polling location.
So there'd, so there'd be no effect if we did move it till the spring of '22?
There wouldn't, there would be no effect on Golds, on Good School. You were still using it as a polling location, but it would be as the current voter's polling location as opposed to the new voter, proposed voter's polling location.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
May I interject with one more suggestion? I did just receive the, the personal cell phone number for the CEO of the United Way York, and I think that's our key point here in today's discussion, discussion. I would ask either for a quick recess to talk with the CEO of United Way together with the commissioners, or ask that you postpone these votes until a, a meeting perhaps next Wednesday. So. So we can have it all worked out.
Right, but we're, we're on D, so that's, that's after D.
Right, but Good School is affected by E, right? Yeah, Good School is affected by E, so unless you're going to bundle two locations now at Good School, D, E, and F are all affected by the decisions of the United Way.
So what are your discussions, Steve, with United Way about, this is because of the sale of the building, construction, you know?
The, both D and E are about moving the location to the proper voting precinct.
Okay.
We certainly understand the mayor's concerns, but we also do know that due to the election code and the PA Constitution, that we are expected to try to do the best we can to put a polling location in its proper precinct.
But United Way, in effect, isn't necessarily saying we have to be out of there for this election?
That is correct.
Okay, Michelle, what's legal standpoint on this? Because this is coming down to a legal issue. Are we, at this point, required, or does it have, or can we postpone it till 2022?
I, I think because you're taking action to make those changes, now that we realize that they're in the wrong district, you can postpone those, because really, your, your primary goal is to make it as easy as possible for individuals to vote. So, because there's a reasonable expectation to think that it might be difficult for people to grasp those changes, and as we've had, you know, the representatives in the community certainly can, can make the decision now, you can table that decision, or you can make the decision effective at another time. I think our concern in meeting with the Elections Department was that some of the locations were not going to be available very soon, and so that was some of the reason to do them all at the same time.
But clarification, these two locations we're talking about right now are available to be used for the general election of 2021?
That is correct.
Okay, then, then Julie, I'm going to make a recommendation that we make it effective for 2022.
So you're going to amend the motion?
I'll amend the motion.
Okay, so we have an amended motion for moving the polling location from York City, 7th Ward, to People's Bank Park, effective for the primary of 2022. Any further discussion? I need a second on my motion.
I'll second the amended motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number E.
So just for a point of clarification, should I read it as it's written in the agenda, or should I read it as, I think we're changing it?
Should read it as it's written and then amend the motion.
Okay. I will make a motion to permanently move the polling location in York City, 12th Ward, precinct to Alexander Good School, 251 North Broad Street, from United Way, 800 East King Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No. Would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
You would like to amend the motion to?
To make it effective at the spring of 2022 primary election.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the, I have a motion and a second to amend the motion, effective the primary 2022. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to F.
I'll make a motion to permanently move the polling location in York City, 12th Ward, 3rd Precinct, to 4th United Methodist Church, 20 North Lehman Street, from United Way, 800 East King Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I will make, I'll make an amendment to the motion to move the effective date till the spring of '22 for the primary election.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to the amendment, amended motion, amended motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and, whoops, I believe we have one more to go.
I'll make a motion to temporarily move the polling location in Shrewsbury Township, 1 District, to Susquehannock Middle School, 3280 Fishels Church Road, Glen Rock, and the Shrewsbury Township Building, 11505 South Susquehanna Trail, Glen Rock, and this is due to renovations at the Township building.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So let me just recap to make sure we're all on the same page. We will be permanently moving the location at Hanover Borough Five, Fifth Ward. We will be permanently moving location at Newbury Township Three. We will be moving the permanent location for York City Fifth Ward, effective the primary of 2022. And that same applies for York City Seven, Seventh Ward, York City Twelfth Ward, First Precinct, York City Twelfth Ward, Third Precinct, and then we are temporarily moving the location of Shrewsbury Township One. So we will have all of these updated on our website to show these changes. For those folks who are, their polling locations are being moved permanently, the Elections Office will be sending out new voter registration cards reflective of that. We will also be sending an update out to those who live in Shrewsbury Township District One, reflecting that location change for the general election this year.
So, and just, just to clarify one thing, the immediate moves for the three locations that people will be notified quickly so they will know that their places have changed due to these motions. The people in the city, the four locations that were not moving till the spring of next year, it may be reported from this meeting that, you know, we've made a motion, although it's not effective till next spring. When will we notify, when will be appropriate to notify people of that upcoming move?
For the polling location changes that were made today, our office will be sending out ID cards beginning today to those affected voters. For everyone whose polling place will change for the 2022 primary, they will receive new voter ID cards at the end of the calendar year leading into 2022 to avoid any possible confusion.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure we didn't confuse people.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Any additional comments?
Just want to thank the commissioners for acting swiftly and decisively in protecting the voters' rights of the people of the City of York, and also volunteer all cooperation of the City of York for informing our voters at the appropriate time, working with your Elections Board.
We do plan on doing the drive-by again, so we'll be reaching out to help with the situation out.
Of course, we will, we will block, we will block the road for our voters, we will, we will help you in any way we can.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dropbox.
Yeah.
Drive, Dropbox.
And I just also want to say thank you, too. This has been a heck of a year. I had a conversation with Michelle five minutes ago, you guys have answered all my questions, we had recount. It's just been exciting, but nerve-wracking at the same time, so I do appreciate the ability to be heard and the swift action, and I think delaying is the right thing to do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Okay.
All right, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. If those of you are still watching us, thanks for hanging in there. Have a great day.